We had everybody doing their, if you wouldn't mind, so people like you paying attention to the goals.
Have you checked on our website and seen that everything is updated?
I haven't.
All the agendas, all the meetings, everything is there up to the minute?
Well, it wouldn't surprise me. I would not expect nothing less from your group. Other groups maybe that would be a surprise.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Oh, wow.
This is a council study session. It is a public meeting. It's been, the agenda's been published. There's no public comment at this meeting. This is a discussion among the councilors and our staff, as well as we might have a number of people that we might ask questions for related to the process. We won't have any of that, and we are gonna have a discussion about the IG process. We won't have any of the candidates for IG speak today because of the fact that we're also, you know, nobody from the public will be speaking also. But we will have a few presentations regarding items on the agenda here also. I believe that Council Sanchez will be here in just a little bit, so that'll give us a quorum, so we'll wait on approving the minutes until he gets there, here, or another councillor gets here. But we'll go ahead and start the discussion, start the agendas. We'll move to item B, is a discussion of the inspector general appointment process. And why don't we start with Stephanie MCR, if you would, why don't you give us an overview, talk about the process, and we'll talk a little bit about why we're here, why we're having the discussion right now, and kind of give some of the parameters to it.
Yes, Mr. President, the council has requested a study session to delve into the process that was used in the selection of the inspector general candidates that were submitted to council by the AGO committee. And I summarize for you some points about the inspector general ordinance itself and what it requires as far as the selection of the IG. So if you'd like to go right now, if you'd like.
If you'd like, we'll just give, you can hit the highlights.
Okay. So the inspector general ordinance, two dash seventeen dash five speaks to the selection and retention of the inspector general. This ordinance was last amended in September of last year. So currently, it calls for the AGO committee to advertise the position, take applications, interview the candidates, and then present or submit to the council three of the names of the top scored candidates in their ranked order. Per the ordinance, their recommendation is to be based on the candidate's integrity, capability for strong management, and demonstrated ability in accounting, auditing, financial analysis, law, management analysis, public administration, investigation, criminal justice administration, or other closely related fields. And then the council is to appoint the IG from the three candidates, per the ordinance. Part of the selection of the IG is that they must be fingerprinted and a criminal background check run. The results of those checks are only privy to the AGO committee, they're not to be disclosed to anybody else. The IG candidate, if that person does not already maintain or have a certified inspector general certification, they must obtain that within two years of their appointment. The IG once appointed serves for a term of four years, at which point the AGO committee can only remove them by a supermajority vote of the committee. And after the four-year term is up, the council decides, will decide whether or not to reconfirm the incumbent IG based on the recommendation of the AGO committee. In this case, we don't have an incumbent IG. That position was vacated in January of 2013, and since then, Mr. Pacheco has been acting as the interim IG. Another condition is that if a former employee is selected as the IG, he or she cannot be involved with any investigation or assist in any investigation of his or her department, the previous department, four years after the first.
And that was changed from the amendment to the ordinance that was made a couple months ago, which was specifically addressed a former employee and gave some limitations on the kind of things that they could do, that they could perform. Is there anything else in that ordinance that, it's been a while?
No, that was, that actually covered everything in that amendment.
Specifically that point right there?
Right. Prior to this amendment, no former city employee could apply.
Okay, so the specific change was no former city employee could even apply. The amendment was made that allowed former city employees to apply, but then specified that if they had work to do that had to do with their prior department or duties, then they could not perform those duties.
Within four, within four.
Yeah, okay, I just want to get some clarification on that.
Could I ask another clarification on that? Would that effectively mean that no, that someone like Mr. Pacheco could not apply because everything he does is with a former department that might be affected here?
I think it would be specific to his department. In this case, we consider the IG department his department, so he couldn't.
So if there were an investigation of the IG department, he couldn't participate in that?
Right.
Okay, just.
And Mr. President, councillors also, in your packets, there is a list of suggested questions. Mr. Curtis, the Chair of the AGO committee, is here to answer any questions that you have. They also provided a list of the interview questions that were used during the process, and that's in your packet as well.
Okay. So, yeah, I think the, we had a list of some of the councillors suggesting some questions that we might still have from Mr. Curtis. So, Mr. Melindres, do you want to make a comment on the process? I mean, the council has a role in this, obviously that's why we're here, and that's why these recommendations were given to us. And the council has a specific role in this process. I mean, we, it's an appointment-type process according to the ordinance, and, you know, it's not unusual. I guess it's a part of what we do, but it is different from personnel matters, and I think that's where, I think, when it comes to legal, you know, sometimes the concern is, you know, the council overstepping our bounds or possibly, you know, I just want to make sure, because we've taken steps, and from you, and to ensure that the council's actions and the council's actions moving forward, even the discussion in this, in this study session, is within not only, you know, what we need to do, but also within the law, within the ordinance, and not violating that in any way. Do you want to comment on that?
Sure. I'll piggyback on some of the things that Monsiada mentioned about the council's role in the process, and I think as we've all analyzed and discussed at the last council meeting, the ordinance clearly says that when AGO gives you the committee members that you pick from the three. However, you know, the council, it doesn't preclude the council from holding this type of study session, investigating sort of the process. I mean, the council passed an ordinance that laid out a process and criteria to get here, so this is an opportunity for the council to look at that process and understand how the ordinance and policy that it adopted is being applied. And so, in that, you raise an important point about, about sort of barrier and the buffer between the council as an appointing body and the AGO that sort of does the legwork leading up. And so, to the extent that the council looks at this process and has potential interests that may or may not have been satisfied in the process, or after we hear from Mr. Curtis, I think it'd be important for the council not to insert itself in the shoes that the AGO would hold as far as that initial vetting, but I think it'd be within your purview to make any specific requests of the AGO that you might find prudent as far as what, you know, what the council's interests are in this, and we could have that discussion with the AGO chair. As was mentioned at the council meeting as well, the council adopts policy at a point, and then it ends up implementing it at a later point, and I think that there's still opportunity to investigate, you know, if the council identifies that there are potential holes or policy concerns that it has with the ordinance, I think it's still within the council's purview to contemplate amendments before any final selection in any appointment process.
Okay. So, and that's why we're here, that's why the study session, because we did have the recommendation of the three candidates, and then the task of choosing among the three as a council body. We decided not to do that. We actually decided to defer that.
Right.
Until February 1st, I believe, is the next meeting, and then first week in February. But to have a discussion specifically in regard to the ordinance and their, to the degree of this concern about, hey, have we, are there some, are there some concerns about the ordinance, are there some holes in the ordinance, are there some ways that we might want to look at revisions to that? And so, you know, my, I think my perception of this meeting really is to ask some questions of Mr. Curtis, have a discussion that might reveal that or not, and go from there. Okay. And Mr. Curtis, would you like to, welcome, sir. Would you like to, I mean, maybe, you're welcome to join us at the table.
Sure, sure. Are you to sit over here?
What we could do is just start off with just some questions for you, and other councillors could, I mean, if they'd like to, I'll just start with some of the questions.
Just for a second, if you don't mind, Mr. President. I mean, I had answered some questions before, and I'd like to sort of clarify if you remember correctly, I said you're using my memory, and my memory was pretty good, but wasn't exact. And so, I think it was how so bent when you asked, are there going to be applicants? And I gave you some answers, and I don't know if it was like the lot of, in the right order. And to answer your first question, there were, in the first go-around, there were thirty-one total applicants, of which HR goes through the first step, just to give you an idea of the process. They vet, not vet, they basically winnow out those applicants that have, and give us those who have the requisite education. Those were nineteen. Of those, we picked, I don't have that number, but we picked about eight or nine to interview. That process did not go forward. The second go-around, after the amendment.
The eight or nine to interview did not go forward?
Well, because we went through the amendment to the ordinance so that we could allow, because some of the people who applied were city employees.
Yeah.
And we said, no, we can't, and some of those we wanted interviewed.
Okay.
So, the next go-around, we had twelve only applied, of which eight went through the HR process, of which five we wanted to interview. One did not come to interview, so we interviewed four. So, I wanted to give you a better answer than I did that night. I didn't have those numbers in mind.
So you had, so the eight or nine, so after the amendment, you moved forward to try to interview those eight or nine?
No, no, we reopened the, we reopened the position because now we have different, we have different people that, quote, could not, thought they could not apply, could apply.
So, but you said that, I'm just, you said that in the eight or nine were people that did apply.
Yes.
That could not apply, so.
No, 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 no. Eight or nine of the nineteen that qualified for education purposes, we selected, I think it was eight or nine, to interview.
Okay, so, but in that, beyond the eight or nine, there were some in that eighteen or so that you did not select for interviews because of the fact that they were former employees or?
Experience, no, no, not employees, experience.
Former, like, city experience, you mean?
No, just experience in investigation, basically how their resume, how they approached their resume, how they, what they told us, what they were doing.
So they, the ones, the candidates that are here now.
Yes.
Before us now, they did not apply?
No, I'm not saying that.
Before we made this change?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it was a two-part process. The first process had thirty-one original applicants, the second process had twelve original applicants.
Okay, so in those thirty-one original applicants, the candidates that are here now before us now, were they in that original thirty-one applicants?
I did not ask that specific question.
You did not ask?
That specific question. I didn't say, were they in the first go-around or not? And so, I can't answer to you to say, I presume somewhere.
Okay.
But I don't know the answer.
You don't, yeah, I'm missing something.
Maybe a point.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. President, maybe this is simple. It seems to me that, if I understand correctly, there were two application periods, and persons who met the minimum qualifications for each by education.
Right.
Were lumped together into the pool that you ultimately considered candidates from? Is that correct?
No.
Or were the first, the ones from the original process asked to, that process was terminated, and they could have, on their own accord, applied during the new process? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, yes. You mean, basically, we had two postings. We posted it, and we, and based on the current ordinance, people applied. We then changed, or we, you changed the ordinance per our request, and it was posted one more time, and applicants applied. And the result of that posting is what you have before you.
Okay, I understand.
Does that help? I'm sorry, I already explained it.
Yeah, it sounded a little bit like, and I guess maybe it's a moot point now, that the applicants that could not apply in the previous posting did apply in that posting.
And some of them did.
Okay. Even though they knew that they wouldn't ultimately, you know, qualify under the ordinance?
The original, they did, yes. And then subsequent, I believe there was individuals who applied that did not apply.
And so that's what created the need, in your minds, that there might be a need for an ordinance change?
Well, for instance, excuse me, if you don't, a little informal, but, for instance, Mr. Pacheco, who applied in the original, he could not, we could not select him. For the ordinance, we could not even interview him, could not select him. That precipitated the request, and we said, who else was out there that could have been qualified that did not apply? And so, are we, are we missing a pool of applicants that would be excellent choices for the IG?
Yeah, and the interim IG didn't, didn't apply the second round?
The second go-around, Mr. Pacheco did not apply.
Others did, so, okay. So it sounds as though, I guess I was, I had the impression that the intention was to increase the pool, but then when you re-advertized, it actually diminished.
Correct, yeah. I was surprised that it went down that significantly.
Counselor.
That was my comment or question, you know. We had a third, roughly a third fewer with the second posting than we did the first posting. Do you, would you, do you think it was stale, or everybody who was interested in becoming a, taking the job of being a inspector general saw that the first time and realized that they weren't going to get it, and just, in other words, there are thirty-one people out in Albuquerque that might be interested in being an inspector general?
Yeah, well, those twelve didn't even pass muster from an education standpoint.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, really. And I think, I think you did, you did hit it, is, I'm applying for it, and all of a sudden, I got applied again, and I say, you know, I gotta go to Michigan perhaps, I don't know.
Counselor.
And maybe this will help clarify this process, just a little, because I think there are other things that are, that are people relevant. Were the original, if you know, were the original thirty-one people whose process was terminated, were they notified that there was a new process? Or is there by possibility that some of those persons believed that their applications were still valid, and they were a part of the second round?
You know, that's, that's a very good question, and as I understood it, this is all handled by HR. And we don't have, all we do is look at what they give us, and then interview those we think we should interview, and then give you the list. And, pardon me.
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, I think that the ETR's general procedure is not to notify anybody that something's been closed or withdrawn.
That's my experience too, I was just curious.
And I asked that same question, I got the same answer, sort of, and I thought, wow, I know that.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So, yeah, the real numbers are, if you take out the education requirement, previously it was, it was winnowed down to nineteen, and then the second round, it was winnowed down to only eight qualified applicants. Realizing that HR handled the way this was brought forward, was there a legal reason that it needed to be re-advertized after we amended the ordinance? Or, I mean, what I'm driving at is this, why couldn't we have just kept the same pool and opened it up for more? Is there any legal reason why we needed to do it the other way?
I'm not aware of one. I see terms here, I mean, if somebody represents HR would like to point on that. My understanding of why that was done was simply because the rules had changed, and folks, you know, the idea was, people should have the opportunity to respond, you know, to the new rules.
Sure.
Because the idea was that originally, potentially, the limitation excluded potentially good candidates, and so you should have an opportunity to apply under the new, you know, rule. I don't know that there's any requirement that the first pool could not be considered any longer. I imagine that you could structure that various ways and still be okay.
So, Mr. Curtis, a few other questions for you. For the four, the four that were interviewed, just quickly, they'll just ask us a quick, background checks were done on the floor?
No.
Did not do background checks on the floor?
No, it's my understanding when a, an offer is made for an appointment, that HR will initiate the background check, and only after that will be actual offer.
You mean the offer for employment?
In other words, once, if you select a person, a background check is made on that person, otherwise you'd be making background checks.
We would select the person, then the background check?
That's how I understand the system would be. Otherwise, you're looking at five, four or five background checks, all of which cost money.
That makes sense. How about references?
The references were there, we did not really check references. In a couple cases, we actually knew the people, not, I didn't know them, but members of the committee knew of them, and we did not specifically check references.
So they, they knew of them based on, based on their familiarity with their previous employment and who they knew, the way, how about any previous employers contacted?
No.
Nothing on that, like, on the record? Go ahead.
And you, I'm sorry, I think I might fall, and I just want to follow up there, just to be, just so we're all on the same page. Your interviews or the process that the committee used to do these interviews was based solely on information reported by the candidates themselves, and not based on sort of any sort of other steps that would, traditional hiring process would use, like, references or else, like, just limited to what they reported to you? Is that correct?
That and knowledge, our knowledge of the committee of candidates as well.
May I?
Go ahead.
And this would be for staff. Mr. Lindres, I realize we're asking you to put your, to go back to law school, put your HR legal hat on here. I think this brings up an interesting question, that perhaps if this council were to select a candidate from the three, and the HR department were to find that the candidate had a flag, for whatever reason, in their background that would normally preclude them from hiring based on their background or whatever, what do we do now? Because I'm not sure that I see an option in the ordinance, except that maybe we have to sort of hire them, and then the AGO committee has to have a supermajority to fire them. That seems oversimpl, there has to be another answer to this.
Mr. Chair, or Counselor Davis, I don't believe that's actually correct, because the way that the ordinance is structured is that the council makes the appointment from the three, however, the selection is not final until a background check is included, including FBI fingerprinting and that nature of background investigation. That's, that's the language in the ordinance. It's not final until those things happen.
Okay, and just to clarify, I see that in the fifth bullet point on the staff's notes, it notes that prior to the final selection of the IG, the candidate must be fingerprinted. But maybe that's really sort of after council makes their selection, so that all three candidates that are on the list have not sort of considered selected for that, right?
Correct.
Counselor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And were there any people, because there's some concern that perhaps some of the first pool didn't know they had to reapply to be in the second pool? Did anyone complain that?
I have my word, I'm sure. Yeah, and we thought of it being fair, I mean, that's how we looked at it. We didn't want someone, we wanted to have a separate pool. I mean, it's re-advertized, as we assume, that's a good word sometimes, but that you, if you're interested, you would look and reapply. And if you weren't interested, that can show lack of interest, really, more than anything else.
Can you give us the questions that you all asked of each of the candidates?
Yes, right, right. And I was going to, I was going to commend Counselor Sanchez for asking one of the questions that we asked, which is question six, when you asked it at the meeting. That was one of the specific questions we asked. But these are the questions that we asked each candidate, and individually, obviously, and they answered, and we view that as part of our basis.
And the, those questions, they correlate with the selection criteria? I mean, were there, is that how they were prepared to correlate with the selection criteria? Were there any questions on, that were asked of any of the candidates that were not on that list?
No, no, we followed this list religiously, and we didn't, we didn't deviate from one client. Now, now, all that said, a candidate may ask, I said, he had questions of us, and that may have prompted a little bit of discussion. That was, that was, that was not stopped.
On the two postings, you know, one thought that I had was, was this a pretty large pool, the first were a larger pool the first part, and then a smaller pool the second posting. The only thing that changed was there was a, there was an amendment changed to the ordinance there, and could it be that some, some of the people that were in that original had applied, that didn't apply the second time, and they made a decision not to do that, seems like? Did they make a decision not to do that, I'm speculating, because there were new candidates that were added to the pool that they felt like maybe they didn't have a fair shot or fair chance of, you know, to match up against a candidate that, say, has had some, you know, prior, you know, people, members of the committee had knowledge and actually presented to the council an idea to change the amendments so that, you know, some, you know, new candidates could be added to the pool, or new pool. It seemed, it would seem that, you know, maybe some of the, some of the candidates maybe had the idea that, you know, now that the committee, you know, made a recommendation to the council, the council made a decision that changed the ordinance, now some very specific people, you know, were added to the, to the final pool, and maybe I may not have a spare shot, you know, now that this, now that we're in this pool.
Can I answer your question? Sure. I mean, that, that could be. I mean, I don't know the reason for them. I think, I think what Counselor Harris said was probably as inappropriate, that a lot of them just lost interest, or had another job. I have no idea why they did. I was surprised and disappointed, to be very honest with you, that poll went down that way.
No.
It was not our intent, like, our intent was to say, hey, some of these people applied, and we have to eliminate them because they were city employees, just.
And it could be, I mean, we, we created this ordinance that sets this process, and so it could be that, the reason why we're having this discussion is that there could be some holes in that ordinance that, you know, I think that's what we're considering right now. Is there, is there a process, was there a process done that might be, could there be a better process to it, and is it worth looking at, many of that, Counselor?
Let's look at the numbers. Of the, of the first group, after, after looking at the group of nineteen, you made a decision to interview eight or nine. Did they know that? Did that?
Yes, no.
No.
And let me just expand on that, just to leave this. There is a memorandum in the city that says, if an applicant is qualified and has previous military experience, we must interview them. I'll be very honest with you, two or three of those were in the must interview category.
I see. And that's, does the education requirement trump that?
No, if they didn't meet the education requirement, they didn't even get into the nineteen. So that's sort of, so the eight or nine is a bit misleading, as opposed to the five that we selected in the second.
Ms. Curtis, how would you? Ms. Carr, how would you feel if, if, if it were a request, let's say, and I'm not saying anybody's making this request right now at this point, if it were requested of the, of this council members, that you all, well, that maybe there's a recommended ordinance, the ordinance changed, there's a number of changes that we might recommend, and we were to either request that you withdraw the recommendation to the council, or while that ordinance is being looked at, you know, a deferral, maybe for a period of time, I'm just, there's a number of things that Mr. Melendez said, you know, could happen as a result. I'm not saying that anybody's making a, you know, a request on that, but how would you feel if a request like that was made?
And personally, I mean, this is, you know, this is your fault. I mean, this is your, this is what you do. I mean, we're all volunteers. We just, we serve, in a sense, at the pleasure of you and the administration. And yes, I was going to say, gee, what do we do all that for? You know, thanks a lot. But, but no, I mean, if that's what you want, sure. I mean, we're not going to pull it back. I think that's your question.
Okay. Counselor Gibson.
You make a really good point. I just want to acknowledge that, that the people serving on AGO are all volunteers, and it's really, really important to me, and so, you know, really appreciate your service and, you know, the attention. I know you give a lot of attention to it, and the other members do too. But I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about how the decision was made, how you whittled down the number after, after the interviews were conducted. I understand the questions that you used, I mean, it sounds like they were pretty, pretty well presented the same way to, to everyone. Did you use anything else, like writing samples? I understand you didn't talk to anyone else, but was there anything else that you used besides the interview questions to get a sense of, you know, of the candidates?
And the answer to your question, no. And I mean, you started, you started out a question on the process, and, and, and let me, we had a committee, a subcommittee out of five, and three people, that basically went through the twelve, the twelve qualified, and, or, no, the eight, eight qualified, and said, okay, which ones we want to interview? The same process went in this, and there was three of us. The, the next process was to actually develop the questions and select, or, or not, excuse me, to interview those individuals. And then your question went on to say, well, how did you then discuss that? We went through four interviews, and then sat down and said, okay, what do you feel? What do you, why, why do you think this person is more qualified than that person? And, and there was discussion, because it wasn't unanimous, but I'll just let you know that. I mean, we had, we had different views on different candidates, I believe you might want, or applicants. But we came down to, just like your discussions would be, you have different opinions, and you discuss it, and you come to, yeah, no, I think your idea is pretty good. We had that same discussion. We had all, we had the resumes and applications in front of us twice, and then the interviews are what really, really, to me, made the decision, as opposed to someone putting something down. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did. I just have a follow-up on that. So, and I noticed there's a rating for each one of the questions, and you came up with a number at the end for, for each one. Would you use that, that final number in making your decision?
I'm very honest, the answer's no. I mean, I have a hard time saying, and the reason I, you know, and everyone here has done some, you know, you interview the first one, oh, that's a five. Then you do the next one, you say, gee, why did I do that first, a five? Because this one's five plus. And so, and so, we did not do that, and I can pretty much speak to all four of us who did the interview process. We, I mean, we wrote notes, people did that, but even using this, we did not, I mean, to be very honest with you, we did not do that and then tabulate it and say who won. Because it's, I've noticed in my interview process over the years, my idea of what I want changes as it goes along, and I see different people come across with different answers, I guess. So, so, again, no. And I'm trying to explain why.
Yeah.
So, the final, I guess, whether it be a tabulation of points or a vote of four people? I mean, was there, how was that one through three then? Was it a vote? Was it a, was it a numbering process? I mean, how did that happen?
It was a vote. I mean, I said, okay, Counselor Gibson, who's your number one? And you told me who's your number, and then I said, Counselor Bennett, who's your number one? And occasionally, that would change. And then, okay, why? And then we got to your number one, then your number two, number three, and four. So, we did not tabulate numbers.
Yeah.
We tabulated in a sense, opinions, I guess.
And this, if this is, if this is, I guess, out of a legal boundary here, I mean, stop it, because my, I guess my question would be, was it, was there a large gap? I mean, as far as in between, would you say that one through three were very close in your minds, that you were comfortable with all of them? Because here's, here's also, this is a part of our ordinance. Our ordinance says you give us three, when maybe our ordinance says you should just give us one, you know, or two. You know, maybe that's, maybe that's a revision that we need to look at to be fair to you all, or actually honor the process a little bit more. So, I guess, the question would be, is there, is it a huge gap between one and two, huge gap between two and three, or is it, hey, we're comfortable with all three of these?
Let, let me give you, if I can, a comment that was made and seconded by one of the committee members. You know, any one of these four would be good. And, and that's how we felt. Any one of the four would be good. You, by ordinance, we have to go one through three. So, of the four that we interviewed, we would be comfortable with forwarding any of those names to, I hope that answers your question. There was not a divide, a huge divide.
All right. So, Counselor Harrison, then Counselor Jones.
Sure. It's not really a question, but maybe it is, a sort of a comment that I am kind of surprised, and frankly, be disappointed if anyone actually suggests that we tell you to have a do-over. I think that's exactly what this ordinance was designed to prevent, that the whole point of this is to insulate the politicians on this process. And if you send us names, and then the politicians say, we don't like the name, we want a do-over until we get names that we like, I think that'd be a huge mistake. And, and what the question was going to be, you think that these are all good candidates, and I think you've already said yes, and I would just like to encourage counsel, I'm going to vehemently oppose any effort to try to have these folks do a do-over. Maybe we can do a do-over for the next time, but not, we don't have three candidates that they think are good candidates, and then say, well, let's get our fingers in this, and let's do it again until we, we get candidates that we like, because I don't, I just don't think it's a bad idea.
We haven't, nobody's made a request, I don't believe.
As a hypothetical request.
Because it was raised by our legal counsel, that that's one of the reasons why we're here right now. This is part of the process. In fact, it does go to this political body, and so, the fact is, there is a political process to this, you know, the fact, the very fact that it goes before you, your counselor to even make a decision on this, you know, and that the idea, the fact that we, we hear from the public on the process, we hear from the people that we represent, ideally, we're closer to the people that we represent, even in the committee members that we appoint, and so, this, this is an important part of this process, and nobody's inferred that we're going to make any recommendation like that. It was simply brought up as that, that's, that's within the realm of what we would do at a study session like this. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, sir. You might have said this, and I might not have been listening, because I was a little distracted here. You, you interviewed all of the people, you came down to four, and some of you had first place, second place, third place, and obviously, fourth place. Did you call them all back in and interview again after you'd had the opportunity to discuss the pros and cons, so you could ask follow-up questions on that?
Yeah. Could I, could I just go back to your, your comment?
Please.
We interviewed, no, we did not interview in the first process. We basically took what the HR department said, of the applicants, these passed the first muster based on education. There was a committee, a subcommittee, three, that looked at each of the applications, along with the resumes, and said, of those eight, eight, we want to interview five. Then we went to the interview process, and that was a committee, not a committee, four of us interviewed. And, and as a result of that interview, we then presented the list, or sent the list.
Thank you. That was my question. I wondered if you had, you interviewed those five, and then you had an opportunity to discuss and questions, and you said that you asked questions of each other. At that point, I wondered if you had invited them all back in again to maybe have follow-up questions in order to winnow it down a little bit, since you had different opinions.
And the answer's no. We did not, we did not go through that next step. I mean, our difference of opinions were minor. I mean, I mean, it's, it's, as President Lewis asked, was there a divide? And there was many.
And I'm not questioning your process.
No, no.
I'm just curious if that's, because this is a tough process.
Of course. If that was there, I think that would have been something, but you got to understand, once they, the interview process went about four hours, they didn't stick around. We would have had to have called them back in, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for your work in your committee. I know that we've not brought any new IG for some time now, and we've been pushing to bring this to the forefront of the Albuquerque City Council, and I've been through this process twice before with two different IGs that the city council has approved, and I think the process has worked in the past. I know that you did your due diligence, along with the committee members, in interviewing these different and various applicants. You know, your process may be a little bit different than somebody going through the HR process, but I feel confident, and as you stated, you know, you work for the, you know, you're appointed by the council and the mayor, but basically, this office, this committee is very important, and it's more of an independent committee, and we, as counselors, do not want to get involved with your work. Basically, I will not support a deferral. I think we maybe need to look at some changes in the ordinance for the future, because there has been some problems with the IG's office, and I think the problem is coming from the administration, is not allowing the IG office to do, do its work, because they're not sending that many cases up to the IG's office. Those are the things I think we need to look at. As far as the three individual names that have come forth before your committee, I will select from one of those three. I think that you've done your due diligence, the committee has looked into the backgrounds, and I've reviewed the applicants myself, and all three applicants are more than qualified to do this work, and I'm sure when you went through the interview process, you probably felt the three names that you sent up were satisfied, were going to be satisfactory to this council. But I will not support a deferral to continue on the process and change the ordinance. I will, at this next meeting, hopefully, you know, vote on a new IG so the background work can be done, and he can get to work. But being, I want to thank Peter Pacheco and his team for their work, because their hands have been tied for some time, and with what you've had to work with, and I don't know why anybody would want this job, because you don't really have a staff. It's a tough job for those serving in that capacity in that department to be able to do a great job with a limited staff, but I think that Peter and his team have done a fairly good job in, in the time that they've been serving. How long's it been, Peter? Three years as the acting?
More than three years. And this is a staff ID, too.
But thank you for your work also.
Counselor Sanchez, if I may just add to what you just said, and obviously, as you're looking at the ordinance, Counselor Davis, your predecessor, Counselor Gardner, who was, was prior to Counselor Gibson, and amendments to the IG ordinance, and this gentleman here made a lot of suggestions, and it was shot down because of the Ipro issue. And I wanted to emphasize to everyone here, when we made the request to amend the ordinance, Ipro was not the issue. It was exactly as you stated, the independence, the ability to work independently. Now, obviously, there are issues. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know, and, you know, it's, it's to the city's disadvantage not to have the IG do something, but we wanted it to be strengthened so that the IG was truly independent, but act within reason. And, and so, Chris, Mr. Melendez, had two ordinances that came before you, one with the Ipro, and one without. And I just want to sort of say that that's sort of, that may be a starting point, if it's, it's there, and that was there, what, a year ago?
Counselor Sanchez.
I have one question for Chris, based on the Ipro. I know that Santa Fe implemented an ordinance that included the Ipro. How is it working there, or has it been challenged?
Mr. Chair, Counselor Sanchez, I'm not aware, so to kind of set up where you're coming from, Santa Fe did pass, I believe in its audit ordinance, some, some language about being able to keep investigations confidential for a certain amount of time, and that's been on the books in Santa Fe for a while now. I'm not aware of any specific challenges to that. I think, sort of bringing it back to what we have to work with in the IG ordinance today, I think the good news is that the language is there to support the need for confidentiality, if there is a need, and the other good news is that there's been some developments in case law in New Mexico that aren't directly on point with the particular question you're raising about Ipro, but that give a lot of authority to suggest that that's a possibility, even with the language that we have in the existing ordinance, such that we may not need to amend it to address that particular issue.
Thank you.
I'm going to, a real quick concern, and Counselor Davis has a few more questions, but I think it's important, I mean, one of the concerns I have about this process is, and it's been, it's the process that we set up, it's completely, nobody did anything wrong, I don't believe, but this is a process where these three candidates have the ability to come and, and really to campaign for this job among the council, you know, that they have the ability, and by doing that, they, they aren't doing anything wrong. I mean, my understanding is that they have the ability to be able to have conversations with all of this, all of the counselors. They can reach out to us, we can have as many conversations as we want to with all of them, and they can make the case to us privately and publicly, and completely be within the ability to do that. My, my concern about that is that this is an office that investigates, you know, us, and, and our votes are public. I mean, we have, we make a public vote. I guess I'm not really concerned about it, but I'm thinking, is there, is there a better way, you know, when, when somebody is campaigning for a job like this, and then has the ability to be able to view, you know, the results of a vote of nine city counselors and how they voted, you know, here's comments that we make, and, you know, to go through the process here. And, you know, and I have to ask again, is that, is that the best, you know, process for selecting someone for this position? Is it better to be, to have a different process that we use in other hires, where there's not communication allowed that way? So, that, that's a concern, and I, I do have a, a concern about the public perception of the amendment that was changed. I believe that the intentions were absolutely, you know, pure, the integrity there, I think the intentions were right. Counselor Gibson, with the committee, have requested that, but the public appearance I'm concerned about, that then when there was a game change, there was a change made in the middle of the game. And so, those are my concerns, why I think could merit us, you know, possibly a request of the, of the AGO to relook at this, to, and then, and then a period of time for the council to look at revising this, because now, we're talking about Ipro, and those are some different issues, but specifically, this hiring process, it may merit some, some reasons to, to, to have some revisions and to relook at it and look at some serious changes. I'd be interested to see what, you know, our, our staff and others might, you know, recommendations that they might make, or even other best practices, and see what could happen. So, that's why I'm at on it. Counselor Davis has some other.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just follow, I think we're circling around the, the end of this, which I, and I appreciate, we're hearing my motion originally to defer, on deferral, and I appreciate the counselor's support to allow us to sort of dig into this a little bit. And the reason I thought that was important is because this is such an important office, and they do have so much authority within the city, and they also have so much responsibility that this was created, and it's taken us this long to get to this process, that the council created this, this process to be sure it works. And because it's our first time, I want to be sure we get it right, so that there's no chance that the public can question the way we did this process, the thoroughness with which we did this work, and, and I share the concern of my counsel's under the table. I do think there's some tweaks to the ordinance that don't relate to this personnel process that we can do down the road to make their job better, and I'm open to those ideas as we learn more about it. I, I just want to revisit really quickly, one of the things you mentioned, there are five members of the AGO committee, in addition of city members and two ex officio members, if I understand right. I heard you say that a subcommittee of three reviewed the initial applications, and that four members did the interview. Was there, when it came down to doing the voting or the, the public conversation about how to rank Was there, when it came down to doing the voting or the public conversation about how to rank people, were the other members of the committee involved? Was the full committee, including those maybe who hadn't accepted that process, included ex officio members? Were they privy to that conversation? Can you tell us a little about that final piece when we went from five to three to four to make that decision?
Well, the first three, it's sort of like, who wants to help me look at the, who wants to help me look at the applications and winnow it down to, we want to interview. The next process was, please come, let's all get together and look at it. The ex officio members were not invited. It was just the voting members, which of the five. And of the five voting members, one deferred, was not able to meet.
Okay.
And so we just had four.
And those four did the interviews and they also made the rankings accordingly?
Right. And we had a process. I mean, we sort of changed it up. I mean, I didn't ask all the questions. We sort of did all that. And we tried to get a mix so you're not asking the same question. And we did not discuss each individual right after the interview. We waited until everything was done and then sat and had our questions and notes. So, that answered your question.
No, it doesn't. Thanks. I wanted to be sure that we understood who was in the room and helping to make that decision. That informs ours. And to Counselor Lewis's point, I do think it's important that we get this right because it comes to us for that. And on advice of council staff, council legal staff, you know, I've limited my review, and I think all of us have, to items on the record, which gets back to my very first question. And this will be my end and maybe this is our conclusion to open our conversation for now or for later. That I think, it seems to me that the process, as designed in the ordinance, was limited to what the candidates reported to the board, to the committee, and your review was limited there. I wonder if you have an opinion on whether, if there were an HR component to this wherein the HR department were to do some external review or reference checks or some of those other processes leading up to this today. If they were to discover some detrimental quality or some detrimental character from a previous employer or from a city personnel file or whatever it is, and brought that back to you, you know, was there been any discussion about whether that might change your opinion about some of these candidates? And whether you think that might be more appropriate for the committee to consider or for the public to learn later after an AGO has been?
We don't want to deliver.
Yeah, well, yeah. Is the process thorough enough to have considered all that and to be sure that we have the best information we have available?
Again, as I answered President Lewis's comment, if he wants to do something else, we'll do it. I mean, that's not a problem. As far as reference checks, you want to ask my opinion? I mean, when you look at, you know, who's going to put down the references? They're not going to put down the references. They're going to put down people that they've worked for and that they think is going to give a good reference. I've been asked, you know, references and I, and to be very honest with you, I've been advised by my people, Counselor, you'd better not say anything bad. So, I mean, that's a, position-wise perhaps, with someone saying, oh, they're a good person. They're never going to tell you they're a bad person because they're advised never to do that. So, I don't look at that as being a very, this is me personally, very valuable tool, to be very honest with you. Did they have the job? That's important. A background check is very important. But we did not, I mean, my understanding was that would be done after, before they. So, I just sort of gave you an opinion a little bit and I.
And thanks. And that's what I was asking for. I think my intent here is not to cast aspersions on the people who are qualified on the record. I think very clearly, I'm not, it's not our role to make a decision about the qualifications of the candidate. But I think they're all here based on the information in the packet because they do meet the qualifications and you've done your process. But I think about ABS's recent process and their very public debacle around their hiring by a very limited number of people and their failure to include an adequate and a necessary background check in the initial process. So it makes me think about that and how that might reflect on us as a council if we approve and select someone down the road, found to be, and not that I think that any of these folks perhaps are, but to be sure that the process works both for this and this will likely be a model for other independent hires down the road. And this being our first process, I want us to get it right. So, thank you, Mr. President.
How much does it cost to do background checks?
What you do?
I'm actually not sure, Mr. President. HR usually handles that aspect and they usually pick up the cost of that.
I mean, background checks for $25 in our employment?
Yeah, I believe that our HR department has a contract to conduct those background checks. I can get that information.
Yeah, I understand the reasoning. It doesn't seem like it's insurmountable, like such a huge barrier to have three background checks before it comes to us. But Counselor Gibson, you had a?
Yeah, I just wanted to, for what it's worth, offer my own opinion on, not background checks, but references. I absolutely agree. In fact, a year and a half ago, whenever it was when we were looking to, you know, build up the CPOA, we had a committee that was formed in order to come up with prospective members of that. And I think that in selection, the selection committee, the, as I recall, they didn't even do reference checks up there. I think there were very little, from the experience that I've had, it's, I think it's a much more fruitful endeavor to talk directly with the applicant or candidate and, you know, find out about work history and things like that. Reason you'd want to do that, that's, I think, far more telling than to talk with your friends.
Yeah, I agree. In my business or industry, I'm required by federal law to send for reference checks on prior employers, not only background checks, but also send for reference checks.
Yeah.
That way too, I mean, so.
I wouldn't be surprised if that could go away one day. Because, I mean, who has ever put down a bad reference check on an application?
I wouldn't be surprised if they made me do more too. Mr. Melendez, did you have any comments?
I do not.
Yeah, okay.
I was just going to add one more comment about the interview process. One of the things is the intangible. We looked at each individual and asked ourselves the question, are they strong enough for instance, to sit before this body? Are they strong enough to sit before our committee? Are they strong enough to answer questions from, or not answer questions, but defend their position? And that was a very important, it's not a question you ask, it's what you perceive. And again, all three candidates, all four candidates were strong enough. So I wanted to, I had forgotten about it. I was thinking, I said, what am I going to tell you? But that was one of the things I wanted to comment about.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. You're welcome to, unless there are no other questions for you, you're welcome to stay if you like or?
We'll rescue my car.
There you go. But, I mean, and we will continue to have, you know, conversation if that's the wishes of you all. And I'd make a comment, I mean, as this stands right now, this came before the council, we, I mentioned that I was ready to go ahead and make a decision at the time that it came up. But yet, when there's a councillor or any councillors that express suggestions about the process or need to discuss it more, you know, I want to make sure that the council's role in this is honored, you know. So that's why we're here and that's why I support, you know, continue to have these conversations. And I do not think it hurts in any process to wait, you know, a week or two or even at times, you know, as long as we're having some good conversations about the process there. But we also, there was a request of our staff that we put out for any other questions that we wanted to ask of the candidates. So that still is something that we could do if any of the councillors wanted to, you know, give questions to the candidates and have our staff send those to the candidates and have them come back in a way that we can have the responses to those before the next council meeting or at the next council meeting. We could do that. As well as, you know, this, obviously can't take any kind of action here. We could make any kind of request if that was the wishes of anybody, or Mr. Melendez.
I just wanted to sort of make sure and re-comment and revisit something that I said at the beginning, which is, you know, you have the questions before you that the AGO committee asked. To the extent that you're concerned with the process and how those, you know, related to the criteria and the ordinance, it'd be most appropriate to request the AGO to kind of do some more on that. And to the extent that you need just simple sort of evaluation questions in order to select an applicant amongst the three, then please filter those to council staff and we can figure out how to compile those and prepare them for the council when it revisits this.
Okay. Who else?
I just want to make one comment, Mr. President, the council members, the House committee. I want to thank you for being diligent, for really making, thinking this is very important and not just saying, oh, you said number one, you hit them. I think that, I want to applaud you for that. I think that's a positive.
And I would think, I've listened to committees like that and I would imagine, I'm just kind of confirming what you're saying. If we were to just quickly, without asking a whole lot of questions, would have just, you know, went with what you guys recommended and did that. In your position, sometimes you wonder, you know, did what we do really count? I mean, did it matter to them? And so, I think on that end of it too, I think that's an important point. So, hopefully, what's been communicated to you all is that what you've done really has counted and is very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. I'll make a motion to approve study session summary minutes from May 2015. A motion and a second to approve those minutes. Those are favors. If you're finally saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no. And that passes. So, we're going to go on to the next item, which is ethics training. Lindsay Burkhardt's here. We're also going to have a representation of the trainings.
I also have with me here today, Jason Longley, who's an analyst with the Public Service University. And he's going to be acting as the administrator of this project. So, would you like a little overview of the actual portal? What the, what it actually looks like?
You asking me?
Yes.
That's good.
So, assuming as we decide on designated users, as long as you have an active email, you'll be able to invite to join this course. So, you'll be given a username and a login and Jason has this up and there you go. And you can actually show you what it's going to look like.
Counselor, those are the councils. This is the landing page for our Public Service University. And as Lindsay said, you have to have a login to get to this page. Logins are written to anybody who has a city of Albuquerque email address. So, things along those lines. The original landing page will actually take you into, will actually take you into your, what's called the dashboard page. I don't know if you can see it. Dashboard page is your one-stop shop now. I will tell you that things will look a little different on my screen since I'm an administrator. But for the most part, students will look, it still hasn't been logged in there from before. Students will be taken to a page very much like this. This system, these two different softwares, a learning management system and a social media component, which is only slightly used right now. But it allows us to assign courses to people by their groups. So we can build a group for the council and assign it en masse to the council or to individuals one at a time, whatever you decide. There's a variety of different links on here, but they'll go through this slightly highlighted one near the top that says, "Single Courses." From here, it'll take you to all the different courses that we have available. We recently added a bunch of different courses available to city employees that are available there for free. Microsoft Office courses, business courses, things along that line. Most of this content, almost all of the content, has been built by our Public Service University itself included. And users who want your specific ethics course, they can come to this Public Service University catalog. There's a variety of courses available in there. Users can search through using a keyword or just scroll through the different courses to get to the ethics class. This process that I just went through is going to be what any student, any new student or existing student willing to go through in order to access the material. Now, this content is the beginning of the course. It has just a course title, course overview, it does contain the city logo. Any of these kinds of materials can be changed. If you wanted to replace the city logo with the council logo, that's something you can do. If you wanted to replace the text within there, that's absolutely fine. Which then brings you into the course itself. The only difference between what you're seeing and what any other student will see, on the left-hand side of the screen, there's an administration tab, this large area over here on the left. That section, students won't have. Everything else, though, will look exactly the same. They will have their title. And the course typically, we break them down into main categories of a course overview, which is, as it describes, it's an overview of the class, very short, sweet, to the point. Some goals and objectives for the course to let learners know what they'll be covering and what they're expected to learn by the end. And then moves into the content property. This particular course has three different items. It has the ethics, training, material and documentation. That's the content that was created by the city lawyer and along with the rest of the group and secreted upon. And that's been loaded into there. This particular version is current as of January 4th of this year. If ever that needs to be replaced, it can be done. Just let us know. You can upload a new document. You can keep multiple versions. And keep them on there while archiving them so they can't be accessed. But only the current material can be accessed, things along those lines. It also contains a certification. In this case, the certification is simply an agreement that you have read, reviewed and agreed on the materials. These kinds of things can be established to be a quiz if you so chose to quiz folks on whatever material you have in there. But we felt that it made more sense to go with a simple yes, no. You know, in this case, actually just a yes response of, I have read and reviewed. The final thing in this course, which is slightly grayed out, is a certificate. And the certificate will only be accessible when certain criteria have been met. In this case, a user has to view that content, the actual presentation, and has to view the certification and agree to it. And only once they do those two things can they get to the certificate. And the certificate shows the date of completion. It has signatures if you wish, whatever logos you wish.
As my view, it's tracking the slides that are clicked on. And everyone has to be clicked on because this is, is there a requirement?
There is. So there's a couple ways you can make that requirement show up. You can make it so that they have to only access it. In which case, all they have to do is click into the material and they could close out of the material and that would meet the requirements. However, you can add a time component. So if you go through the course and you feel that it should take an hour to complete, you can have it established so that they must be in this course an hour before they can get to anything else.
Can you make it where they just simply have to click on each page? Each page has to be viewed?
Not to each page, but we can separate them out into different sections. So right now, this is one large training module. You can separate it out into smaller ones if you wish, which would add that kind of component to it.
Okay.
But a user will see it. In this case, it shows up just as a PDF where they can scroll through. In this case, we can have it pop up within the page and then a smaller page. We found that this particular method of using a PDF is preferable since most, all users can get access to Adobe Acrobat, but not everybody on PowerPoint or programs like that. Once the user's finished with it, they can go back to this previous page. This particular certification, as I said, it's a very straightforward one. It just says, "Do you agree to this?" And I've already completed this once and the only option that someone would have is, "Yes, I agree." If you, the council wished, and you work it out with the city attorneys to decide that you want a quiz contained therein, you can build a quiz. If you ever need to update the material, for example, this content is current as of January 2016. If you ever need to update the material, for example, this content is current as of January 2016. If you wanted to update it to a new version every year, every quarter, every biannually, that's entirely your expression. I, as an administrator, have the access to go in and change any material in here. And I can add a new file, I just have to come down, hit the file, and tell it which one. And I can delete the old one, or you can keep multiple versions, however you wish. And as far as completions, we can pull completion reports that show each item. If you have a quiz, it can show the grade. We can do that on request, and send that over in an Excel spreadsheet, which just pulls out the data. You can create a new one every year, however you want to do that, you're happy to partner with the council, the city attorney, and to figure out the best way to do that, that's what we're doing.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, there's just one bank of questions that, that, one small bank of questions that appear on each test? Let's say that I take it on Monday and complete it, and I go, I think we're done Tuesday. Well, I see the same question, the same order?
That's a good question, Councilwoman, it depends, it's up to you and the group deciding that. You can establish anywhere from one question to 100 questions, and have it be identical every time. You can establish a bank of questions, 100 questions, let's say, from which we'll randomly pull 20. You can sort and shuffle within the questions, A sometimes is one answer, sometimes it's another, like that. So it's entirely up to you.
Any questions about, you know, about specifically what it looks like now? What the training looks like now, how it functions? There are some recommendations we can make as far as if we want to have it be a quiz, or like that, or let it just be as it is right now, make it a little bit more, I guess restrictive. And you have to, so those are some options that are up to us. But as it stands right now, it's really what's before you, it's these slides. It's the option to, you know, click on the agreement, and then there's a certification. Pretty simple right now, but the content, I know the content is pretty rich, and we'll go through that for a period of time. So, so questions of how it, how it functions at this point?
Counselor Bennett?
So how often, was this asked, how often would it be administered, or required to be retaken?
It's a good question, and that would be, I think, where, yeah, where we're at now is, it's my understanding, we'll go from there, is that there is actually a bill, there's a bill that was written. There's some questions that Lindsay put together for us. The bill actually answers those questions with recommendations from the staff. And so, you know, and the bill really is intended to answer those questions. How, who we want to have take this test, how often, and then, how will it be made public? If we have a quiz, I think, I think we'd probably have to make the quiz results public, wouldn't we?
I'm not sure, they might refer to Jessica or Chris on his own, since they were training. I don't know if he can, um, quizzes are available.
Maybe a pass or fail or something.
But certainly, a certification that it's not completed.
Okay, yeah.
We've not looked at that particular issue, we can. I think that the fact that they've completed it could certainly be made public.
Yeah, and we might want to give some guidance in the bill, if the bill addresses this, Lindsay, some guidance on how it could be updated. So like, let's say at some point, do we want to make it a little bit more restrictive? Or someone has to click on more categories? Do we have to come back and amend this ordinance? Or can we make some language in the bill that says, you know, there's some, here's some, some direction to our staff on continuing to update the content of it? But we could also, you know, we can go through this, I think, two documents I think are important right now is the suggested questions that Lindsay put together, and then how they're answered in the resolution, and go from there. Counselor Bennett?
I would just say the exhibit of the names of the people who have presently provided, and as this is the draft. I would just make the point that essentially, each of us is counselors, and our policy analyst, or backup person, if you want to call it that, that's sort of how I see my policy analysts, certainly. More than a backup person, certainly a backup person at the very least to my involvement with the public, that a similar backup person for each department would be appropriate. Basically, the list now, just as, essentially, the department has plus a few other various people, but. Just an observation and a suggestion on my part.
Mr. President, just a quick question, deputies and supervisors?
Yeah, one, you know, one, whatever the, whatever the, if they're deputy, then it would seem that they would, they should be on this. This, I think, is a, correct me if I'm wrong, but a draft of a possible list that would be the attachment to the bill.
Yes, just to answer the question of who should be required, and Lindsay, would you kind of give a, how this was formed? I mean, what were the, what were the parameters of this?
Yeah, so before you, you have a draft of a resolution that would just kind of outline how we actually implement this program. So, the first big question that we have to tackle is who's required at this time to complete the training? So, as designated in the objectives, it was elected officials and executive level staff, senior level staff. So, what we're trying to do, because they have to be invited to this course individually via their email, we're doing a master list of all those users. And so, now we have a list before you that has elected officials, directors, senior, the executive staff in the mayor's office, as well as the deputy council staff. So, I have a little suggestion, including deputies and, I think, headquarterers for each department, is that?
At the very least, one, one senior deputy position from each department.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't want all boys to take this?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's up to you all, I think it's up to us to, 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 to.
Well, I'm just getting a sense of the questions here, and, you know, it might be that there's a good reason for that. Or it might be that, you know, you go into the portal, and you say, I'm, you know, give your place where you work in the department, or, you know, twice, supervise people, you know, you know, sort of something like that.
Most of the content is directed toward elected officials and their staff, and directors, and supervisors. So I think, maybe the answer to that question is more just on the basis of who it's relevant to, or what it's directed to.
Yeah, that's a...
Mr. President and Counselor Gibson, I was trying to pull up the resolution as we were talking, and I think that the resolution's focus was geared toward those elected officials, and I'll try to find the wording of the original resolution, but I think it talked about elected officials, and might have said high-level appointees, it said something like that, that wasn't a specific group. There's always value in broader training as well, but it seemed like this resolution had a very specific purpose from the outset. I'll try to pull that up as we're sitting here.
The resolution maybe to, like, Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, something that we can also explore is doing a different training program. Jason had mentioned that we can designate groups. So we can have a total curriculum that's geared just for the mayor's office, since the mayor has kind of a different function when it comes to personnel issues, as does the council or supervisor. So we can designate these different groups, and then administer a specialized curriculum, so you can initiate a group.
Okay, so how does the resolution address how the information would be transmitted publicly?
Right now, the resolution says that completion will be noted on the transparency report on the city's main page. So we can, so what we can look at doing is perhaps having a list of designated users' names, and some kind of indication that's, that they are up to date on completing this training.
And I think the resolution probably should have some language that gives direction to the city attorney and staff to be able to update this without going back to the council any time. I don't know if that's even something that we have to specify, that was another thought I had.
And, Mr. President, one other question that I pose is, how often you would like we make different groups to have to take this test? So, do you feel that it would be necessary, as an elected official, to take it once every term? Or every year? Would that be different for different groups?
Elected every day, everybody else every year.
You know, it's one of those things where I think, you do it too often, it becomes meaningless.
Yeah.
If you don't do it often enough, you kind of forget, and things get updated, and, you know, you're not really staying up to speed on it. So, I don't know if one, you know, once a year is too much. I guess it depends on how much, I guess, you know, we run a lot of bills throughout the year, and there's changes, and so, it's on how much we think that this curriculum would actually possibly change, or be tweaked throughout the year. So that, but, you know, I wouldn't be opposed, I think, to once a year, you know, viewing this, reviewing it, you know? But we could also go to when a term starts, or we can go to an every-other-year type thing, or when... But that might be a little bit harder to, you know, to also to watch. But I mean, so it may just simply be that by December of every year, December 31st, that, you know, that it's done. Maybe something like that, something that might make most life comfortable.
Yeah, just not advocating for this, but, you know, maybe after each municipal election, because things change sometimes after an election, and obviously, to make up of elected body or the administration changes during those elections.
Every two years.
So, that might be, that might be another bill.
Like by December of an election, you know, cycle?
Yeah, that would mean that the person who might just be taking office would take it right away.
Mr. President and Counselor Bennett, that, that would ensure that each new elected official is taking it early on. And also, I don't, there will be changes in content, but they won't be many. Each, I mean, you wouldn't see drastic changes year to year. There are sometimes cases that change something, and you go out and you correct it, updating if things change, but it would not be a drastic change from year to year, or not expect it. So, my point was that every two years would be sufficient, ideally would be sufficient.
And, Mr. President, I might use the question to this body as well. Would you like to see any additional materials included? I know that it was kind of your vision, Mr. President, to have this be a real resource to elected officials and city employees. Perhaps we can look at including the, some of the HR picture on, or just computer do that for conduct, and have that?
We could, yes.
As well? Okay.
And once, but once we get this up and running, we can always be looking for whether there are additional materials or resources that we can put in one place, so that they can easily be found, accessed.
And, Mr. President, there's actually one little feature that this global classroom has, is that we can put a feedback request at the end, so after they take their course, they can be asked a question, you know, what else, was this helpful? Is there any additional information you would like further explained, or you need? And we can kind of collect that information from users, because maybe we might be missing something.
So, have they, it takes the, required to, and you got, let's say, 50 people to take it, and ideally, we have, you know, 50 responses with evaluations and suggestions, and, yeah, that's great. I would say the content, I think, really, the content's really rich. I mean, it starts off, you're like, wow, that's some pretty basic stuff, everybody should know that. But then, you know, it gets into some things that I think everybody should read. Everybody should at least, you know, hey, we've read those things, we've understood those things. They're good reminders, I mean, just some, some really good stuff. And I think he has done a great job pulling together all the, all the essential, especially, you know, ethics-type principles. I don't know, I could make your opposite one work with us, too.
And we're, two points, Mr. President. One, we're, one of the additional materials that will go with this is an updated ethics handbook that we've been working, legal staff and council staff working together. And that, I think, used to be handed out to every new employee. I don't think that that happens now, because it, for many years, has been outdated. But we've been working to update that, so that'll be another component of this that covers a lot of the same topics that are in the, in this handout in some greater detail. And then also, I was going to read the resolution, as it might be, as you're deciding who to include in the list, how, how many staff. It says, "The objective is to implement a comprehensive ethics training program for city officials to include elected officials and executive and senior staff in order to reaffirm that the city is dedicated to fostering an environment of fairness and accountability in all of its dealings." So it talks about elected officials and executive and senior staff.
There's no reason why we couldn't expand that though at this point, though, correct?
I think that's correct, it says city officials to include, and then it lists those three, but it did...
It does describe the intent and the area of focus that the curriculum would be designed for.
So you would just have to discuss and decide how many you think are included in senior staff? Because, like you said, that could go to the deputy level, or what others could be, that would be...
Okay, so Lindsay, you'll, you can, obviously, add, add the suggestions that we've made here, another draft of the, we could say, working on this draft, because it's not been introduced, and so there's no change, not changes, it's just, you know, creating a draft. And then at some point, it'll be available for any council to introduce. What, anything else that you want to comment on? Jason, thank you for your presentation and work, and appreciate you. Counselors, anything else? Okay, all right, that's, that's all on our agenda, so we're, thank you all.